Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to ask that all in council chambers, please silence your phones and other recording electronic equipment. Today's date is November 6th, the year 2019, and the public hearing of the Stratford Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order to hear those petitions advertised for this session. For those of you not familiar with our process, each petitioner or their designated representative will present their case to the board. When they've concluded, board members will then have an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. I will then ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in favor or opposition to the petition, and we ask all petitioners to please speak clearly and directly into the mic. After all petitions have been heard, we will then recess to our administrative session. Interested parties may attend and are welcome, however, only board members and staff will be allowed to speak at that time. And please, no matter if the petition is approved or disapproved, no show of emotion, physical or verbal, will be allowed or tolerated. Thank you for that. Ms. Young, will you please give us the pleasure of reading petition number one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
For today's election results.
Thank you.
In response to your question, I'm going to read in petition number one, AD Shoreline Drive, petition of James Barrett, seeking a site plan review and waiver of section 14.2 to expand a non-conforming structure to construct a front deck incidental to a single-family dwelling in RS-4 Zone hardship totally non-conforming property.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself and your affiliation in relation to this application, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Nicholas Owen. I maintain offices at 972 East Broadway here in Stratford, next to the Board of Education Building. I'm here this evening acting on behalf of James Barrett, who could not attend this evening. However, his wife Denise Barrett is in the audience right here, Mrs. Barrett.
Hello.
And they are seeking a waiver in order to connect two decks and make one, one large deck that surrounds three-quarters of the existing home. Part of your application process is to send out mailings, and at this time, I'd like to turn in as evidence that we did in fact send those letters out, and there are numerous mailings that went on along with a copy of the letter. There are some mailings that, for some reason, they did not open the envelopes, and they sent those envelopes back to me, and I would enter those also into the record as an exhibit as being sent. The AD Shoreline Drive property is part of an association. That association consists of many, many cottages, which over the years have been converted to year-round cottages or year-round homes. I can't give you the exact number in that association, however, as I indicated, there are numerous. Prior to the enactment of the zoning regulations in the RS4 district, there were no zoning regulations that involved these dwellings, as you well know. And over the years, I know you've heard many petitions out there. In fact, last month, you heard a petition, I think it was at 9 Shoreline Drive, which was similar in nature. Now, a condominium association can be formulated in many ways. It is a, it's a state statute. It's a law. It's the Connecticut Common Interest Ownership Act, wherein all of the homes or all of the owners are part of that association and are required under their bylaws to conform with certain terms and conditions in those bylaws. Particularly in this association, in order to appear before the Board of Zoning Appeals in an attempt to grant a waiver, you need permission from the association, and based on that, the Barretts had sent out a letter to the association president along with a design review, to design review committee, and in fact, they did get approval to appear before this board, and their petition was approved by their association, which allowed us to submit the evidence along with the application before your good board this evening. Also part of the application is a review application for the coastal site management plan, which is included in the application, a separate fee was paid for, and I have a copy of all of the elevations and the elevation certificates that went along from the state of Connecticut with that which we have obtained.
That's just one.
That's going to be one exhibit, yes. Along with several pictures, numerous pictures of this cottage post-storm, before it was remodeled, and I will submit these as evidence. At this point, you can peruse through them at your convenience. It shows what this cottage looked like when it was a cottage post-storm, and I will submit pictures to the board of what it looks like now and the exact location of where we want to submit, where we would like to connect the decks. The pre-existing non-conforming Connecticut State Statute requires us to prove before this board that there is a hardship. And although Ms. Young read one hardship, there are two distinct hardships associated with this. The hardship, the first hardship, and probably the most important hardship, is that this particular condominium association and these structures pre-existed any zoning regulation. Therefore, what you see out there, by default, if I can use that word, is now legal. However, and it's a big however, if you want to do anything other than what was there, if you want to increase a deck by one inch, if you want to increase a set of stairs or put a new set of stairs and increase it by one inch or one foot or 10 feet, you have to get permission from the association, and you have to appear before the Board of Zoning Appeals in order to get permission to do what you are seeking to do. And in this instance, this is a pre-existing condition. Now, you can turn around and you can say, and you can turn around and think, well, you are increasing a non-conforming use. And that is true, but it is true on all of the petitions that came before this board, prior to this petition being submitted and heard this evening. When people come in and they want to do an addition, they want to expand the residence, they want to build a second story, they want to add decking, they want to add stairs, they want to improve these properties so they become valuable. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that you can approve this petition based on the value or increase in value for any economic reason. We are doing it for pretty much safety reasons. And if you take a look at the plan that was submitted with this petition, you will see the layout of the house, you will see the existing structure, where it's located, and you will see the two existing decks that were previously approved by this commission. I think I presented those petitions to the Board of Zoning Appeals sometime in 2008. So it's an existing deck in the front, an existing deck in the rear, an existing deck in the middle of the size of, the side of the home where it faces Fifth Avenue. Now, Fifth Avenue is the main entrance, pretty much, to this condominium complex. It is a corner lot, and if you take a look at the plan, you will see where it's indicated, where we would like to propose the decks and connect it all so we have a deck on three sides of the house. Now, this is done pretty much for safety reasons because we're on a corner lot. They have children over their homes playing, they don't want them out in the street, they want to be able to control some of the pedestrian traffic that surrounds this house, and this is one way of doing it. Part of the petition, and the reason why we submit so many copies to this board, is they get transferred out to a number of your boards, commissions, offices, and so forth, and there were no comments coming back from anyone. Now, that can be considered a good thing, that can be considered nothing at all. However, I did personally check with the police department, and they have no issue with this deck being connected. In fact, it would add an additional safety feature to this corner because it is a corner house. The proposed work, as Jay indicates in his staff comments of October 16, 2019, the proposed work is consistent with the type of development in the RS4 Zone and consistent with the existing condominium complex for which AD Shoreline Drive resides. It should be also mentioned that the subject site, and I'm reading from the third paragraph at this point, it should be also noted that the subject site is located in the VE Zone as identified by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the FEMA. Now, there's always, generally, there's a question on how is this deck going to be connected so it doesn't blow away during a storm or an extreme high tide or a nor'easter. It's going to be connected to the home by lag bolts, there's going to be concrete piers put in the location where they are designated by the building department once a full set of plans to build this deck is submitted to the building department if this board so chooses to approve this petition. It will be safe, it meets all of the standards of the VA Zone, and we are convinced that it will work properly and that it will not be a detriment, and there's no part of, pieces of the deck are going to fly off during a storm and interfere with anybody else's property. Jay does indicate on the second page of his comments that the, however, the fact that the use and structures are pre-existing and non-conforming would not be a reason to grant relief of this section which looks to reduce non-conformities. Once the applicant seeks to expand a non-conformity, they are willingly abandoning their pre-existing rights and shall conform to the current code and regulations as the hardship is self-created. I don't know if that's completely accurate, that it's self-created by building a deck. We're trying to build a deck to make it more, make it much more safer than what it is at the present time, and we think it's consistent with what this board has seen its way to grant other petitions similar, similar nature. The use of this property is consistent and compliance with the regulations as they existed back then, however, with the change in the regulations, as I previously indicated, obviously, that's the reason why we're in front of this board tonight. As I previously indicated, the entire complex became non-conforming when the RS Zone was adopted, and we are, our thrust is, it's pre-existing non-conforming as a reason for approval, and based on safety issues, this would make that property much safer than what it currently exists at the present time. And what I would like to submit to the board, I have four different elevations, colored elevations of what the property looks like as of today, after all of the work that has been done on this property to make it look like a stellar, single-family year-round home.
Do you want to put today's date on?
Oh, sure. That would be one exhibit. I have no further comments with this presentation. If the board, any members of the board would like to ask me questions, I'll be more than happy to entertain them.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Weddick?
Yeah. Do you know the approximate amount of square footage the two sections are going to add?
I didn't see it there. I didn't see it there. It's not indicated on this survey, Mr. Wade, but I would...
It's about 500.
500. I would rather not guess on it, to be honest.
I'm going to say it's approximately 500 square feet.
500 square feet? All right, thank you.
And that's, that's...
Yeah, I guess. You know, that's a pretty good guess. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Good evening. I wanted to review some of the statements I heard at the beginning of your presentation, then get into the substance of your application. You indicated that I had read out loud a single hardship of total, totally non-conforming property. That's all that was listed on your application form. That's why, that's all that was put on the agenda.
I don't believe it was.
I was just looking at it to confirm that.
I think safety was also included, and however, okay.
But I think you are entitled to, as any applicant, to expand upon what's put on their application form, but just for the record, I was not being selective. I think you've heard me say that I do better as a board member when I get the plethora of information you have to educate us ahead of time rather than at the meeting, so I just wanted to go on record that going forward, if you are at all able to supply us with information you think would be helpful, getting it sooner than the meeting would be useful to this board member.
I take that as constructive criticism.
Thank you.
Okay.
The evidence of notice of neighbor notification, I believe we changed our policy so as not to receive it at the meeting, so I don't know if you're aware of that.
I was not. I know that was up for discussion, but I don't know that it was adopted.
It was.
Thank you.
Mr. Hibansky, there's a related question. I heard the presenter describe two of the envelopes were returned, and in my opinion, if you had that lead time, you could determine there were best efforts made or was the applicant addressing it inaccurately. I'm going to leave it to you if you are satisfied that we don't need to leave the hearing open because best efforts were made. I'll just put that out there for your consideration. Maybe you can answer that before the close of the hearing. And then I wanted to ask, I believe I heard you say this is a corner lot.
That's correct.
I too, when I looked at the map, thought it was a corner lot, and therefore, I thought, and this is where I need an education perhaps from you or Mr. Hibansky, that a corner lot meant two fronts for setback purposes. I think Mr. Hibansky shared with me that it depends on if it's a private road or not. Can you expand if you know how corner lots work with private roads versus public roads, and if in fact, this is a corner lot that has two fronts?
It is a corner lot that has two fronts, but since this is part of an association, there are no, there were no specific side yard setbacks addressed in the original condominium documents. That only came into effect when you adopted the RS4. So we did not consider this as part of the RS4 district when we submitted the original documents and the original applications. So I did not think that it applies to the side yard and setbacks.
Do you want to add anything to that, Mr. Hibansky?
No. I had to think about whether it was a corner lot or not for, I would say, at least 45 minutes because it's confusing. But Shoreline Drive in that area is a private road. It's a private driveway, actually. So it isn't, because it is not a publicly maintained road, the town, and there was some discussion amongst town staff here today, the town would not consider that a corner lot.
Thank you. With respect to the building being in the VE Zone for FEMA purposes, you gave us a single set of elevation certificates, so that I can share with my fellow members. I did not read them thoroughly. If you know, what is the base flood elevation in this zone for which habitable space is supposed to be elevated to?
I can't tell you that, however, it is included in the documents, and it is currently being complied with, with the reconstruction of that home. So the elevations that are currently, that currently exist will be the same elevation that the new deck, if it's approved, or the new section of deck that's approved, it will comply with that elevation.
I think I heard you say, but please correct me if I got it wrong, that the existing structure pre-renovation was below what FEMA would require?
No, I did not say that.
But the renovations will bring it into compliance?
No, I did not say that.
Then help me.
Pre-storm, it was at the appropriate elevation as it was required to be under the existing FEMA regulations at that point in time. Since we did not, we were not able, based on the fact that the structure was less than 50% destroyed, we were able to rebuild it and comply with that original elevation as according to FEMA. So we have complied with what we were supposed to comply with at the time. However, we were required to get an elevation certificate to affirm to the agency that we are complying, and that's what I submitted to this board.
So I'm going to try this again.
Okay. Maybe I'm not being responsive.
No, I think you are. I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, and I appreciate your patience with me.
Sure, not a problem.
FEMA has established a base flood elevation for this geographic location.
That's correct.
This building does not comply with that, nor does it have to.
That's correct.
Because the renovations do not rise to a certain threshold to make it comply.
That's correct.
And we're not sure how non-conforming it is because you don't have that at your fingertips as to what is the requirement versus what is the current elevation, but that may be in the paperwork you gave us this evening?
Base elevation is 14 feet.
And we think the current elevation is, I thought I saw something around eight. Thank you. But I think you'd also agree, would you not, that the deck is not habitable space, so its elevation is not something FEMA would necessarily measure?
That's right. They wouldn't necessarily have a major concern for that. They would have a major concern for the house. But again, the house pre-existed, and it complied with the FEMA elevation at that point in time. And again, since it was not destroyed by the storm by 50%, we did not have to meet the new requirements. In fact, I can just basically point out to you guys, some of these homes that come in, or some of these applications that come in, they have to put them on piles now to meet the new regulation. I'm sure you've heard many of them, including last month.
Last question.
Are you sure?
I'm not, but I'll try to make it the last question. Thank you. I appreciate you telling us the intent going forward to provide more details to the building department about the construction methods that will be utilized. As I am not a building contractor and maybe couldn't appreciate the terminology you used, is it fair to say this will be anchored in a way that this deck will not become a projectile in some horrible storm event where things are breaking off from buildings that are not anchored?
That's appropriate terminology.
All that others ask questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? With that being said, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition?
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Is there a motion to close this petition? Motion by Mr. DeSulio, second by Ms. Young, all in favor? Any opposed? None? Ms. Streets, will you please read the next and last petition, please?
Petition number two, 70 East Main Street, petition of Erstad Biddle Properties, Inc., seeking a site plan review and waiver of section 16.6.5.1B to establish a 246.33-foot rear wall sign in an MA Zone. A hardship conforming sign would not be easily visible to vehicles traveling southwest on I-95. Conforming sign would be visibly inefficient at 74.35 feet compared to the Welcome to Stratford at 352 square feet.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hahn.
Yes, good evening, ladies. Madam Secretary, member, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Erstad Biddle Properties, Inc. of 321 Railroad Avenue, Greenwich, Connecticut. Willing Biddle, President and CEO, sits behind me in the first row. He is here to answer any questions that may come up. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits, seven exhibits, to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation. However, before I go into details of the application that's pending before you tonight, I think it would be a good idea for me to give you an outline of the historical and chronological approvals already received from the Stratford Zoning Commission, the Stratford Harbor Management and Waterfront Commission, and the State of Connecticut DEEP. I've made three or four public presentations to the zoning commission on this project going back over a year. It's been heard by them ad nauseam. This is the first time you got it, though, so I want to give you a little background. Exhibit one is a layout plan that shows the area of the development about which I'm speaking. And as you can see from this exhibit, it shows a large self-storage facility located to the rear of the former Sydney Street site abutting I-95 to the southeast, and the access roadway into the dock shopping center from East Main Street to the north. It also shows a 1,660-square-foot Chipotle restaurant with 800 square feet of retail space and a 2,000-square-foot Starbucks restaurant, both at the front of the site facing East Main Street. All of the site plans which I will show you this evening represents the individual properties on both sides of Sydney Street and East Main Street, the property on the corner of East Main Street and Access Drive, and the property on the corner of East Main Street and Sydney Street, as well as the fee to Sydney Street itself, which was abandoned by the town. So what we're talking about here is Sydney Street. Both sides of the street, all of the properties that were on the former Sydney Street is now owned by my client and is the subject of that layout plan, which is exhibit one. If you look at exhibit two, this is an aerial version of the same layout plan. There you can see the self-storage building in the back, the Chipotle on the left, and the Starbucks on the right. Exhibit three are the architectural plans for the Chipotle restaurant. The restaurant itself's got 1,660 square feet. There's an additional 800 square feet of retail space on the left side of the building, excuse me, on the rear of the building as you face it from the street. And this restaurant is located on the left-hand side of the site as you face it from East Main Street. Chipotle's on the left, Starbucks is on the right. Exhibit four are the architectural renderings of the Starbucks building. And as I just indicated, that restaurant is going to be located on East Main Street on the corner of the former Sydney Street to the right of the site as you face it from East Main Street. That's what the building's going to look like. Exhibit five are the architectural plans of the self-storage facility, which, as I indicated two few minutes ago, is located to the rear of the site as you face it from East Main Street. Now, the site plan reflected in exhibits one and two, and the buildings reflected in exhibits three, four, and five, which I just gave you, were all approved by the zoning commission at its public hearing on June 26, 2019, having received previous approvals by the DEEP under the CAM Act, the Stratford Harbor Management and Waterfront Commission, and the Stratford Architectural Review Board. So prior to the zoning commission approving it in June of this year, all of the other agencies saw the plans and approved the plans. Now, what is tonight's petition? As was read by Ms. Streets, it is an application for site plan review and a variance of section 16.6.5.1B of the zoning regulations in order to establish a 246.33-square-foot rear wall sign facing I-95, and that's on the self-storage building, the rear wall of the self-storage building facing I-95 in a light industrial zone. Now, before I go into the merits of this application and discuss the hardship, I want to give you some background information as to the development improvement of the dock shopping center since it was purchased by my client on January 7, 2005. That's when Erstad Biddle bought it, okay? That's when I started representing them. Between that time and now, I have had the honor to have represented Erstad Biddle in various applications to the zoning commission, the Harbor Management and Waterfront Commission, the DEEP, the Architectural Review Board for such improvements to the site as the expansion of the 192-slip marina, the creation of the boat storage area, a 10,000-square-foot boat showroom, the creation of a river boardwalk and fishing pier, the approval of what is now known as Joey C.'s Restaurant, the approval of what is now known as Edge Fitness, the approval of what is now known as BJ.'s Wholesale Store, and the gas station facility at the Stop &amp; Shop Grocery Store. These are improvements which have added tens of millions of dollars to the grand list of the town of Stratford. Additionally, my clients have made substantial improvements to the entrance and exit accessway to and from the shopping center from East Main Street, and has created a safer intersection with the Home Depot, ShopRite, and Walmart shopping center across the street. We straightened out that entrance where there's a light there. We're on one side of the street, Walmart, and those guys were on the other side of the street. It was kind of screwed up before. It was kind of screwed up before we straightened that out, okay? Now, never once, in 14 years representing Erstad Biddle, in all of the projects that I just described, have I ever asked for a variance of the zoning regulations. Never. In other words, all of those improvements were done in full compliance with all of the applicable zoning regulations. Tonight's application is the first time that we have come to this board seeking relief from any of the zoning regulations. And the relief we are seeking is a variance of 16651B of the zoning regulations, which says, "All signs are permitted on the rear fascia of the building only when such signs face or are primarily intended to be visible from the Connecticut Turnpike, and shall not exceed one square foot of signage for each lineal foot of the building's width along the rear." Now, in this case, the lineal width of the building along the rear, the self-storage building along the rear, is 148 feet, eight and a half inches. Accordingly, the size of the sign at the rear of the building, which would be allowed, which we would be allowed to have under the zoning regulations, is 148 square feet. 148 feet long the building, 148 square feet the size of the sign, under the regulation. Now, when we received the zoning commission approval for the final site plan of this development, the zoning commission asked my client if we would agree to put a Welcome to Stratford sign on the rear of the self-storage building facing the cars heading towards New York on I-95. Coming from New Haven, going to New York, the building's on the right, they're on I-95, coming over the bridge. And zoning commission asked if we would do a Welcome to Stratford sign, which we agreed to do. Therefore, if you look in the zoning files, you'll see that the ultimate approval letter from zoning included as a condition of the approval the following language. "The applicant shall work with the planning and zoning administrator to install/paint a Welcome to Stratford wayfinding sign, visible to I-95 where deemed most appropriate." Now, exhibit six is an architectural rendering of the rear of the self-storage building, where it faces I-95, showing the Welcome to Stratford sign on the left of the rear of the building, and the extra-space storage sign to the right of the rear of the building. So, Welcome to Stratford's on the left in white, in white printing, extra-space storage is to the right in green and black. Both of these signs in this exhibit are approximately 138 feet in total area. They're the same size. They look different, but they're the same square footage under, the way you measure it, under our zoning regulations. However, my client and I feel that the size of these two signs is too small, considering that persons reading these signs are going to be approaching the building on I-95 at a high rate of speed after crossing the somewhat perilous bridge over the Hoosatonic River. It's perilous to me, anyway. I get nervous when I'm up on that bridge. Therefore, we believe that with the signs of the size, as shown in exhibit six, these potential customers will be past the site before they even realize that it is there. All right? Exhibit seven is what we are looking for. This is an architectural rendering of the rear of the self-storage building, where it faces I-95, also showing the Welcome to Stratford sign to the left, and the extra-space storage sign to the right. However, in this case, the Welcome to Stratford sign is 352 square feet, and the extra-space storage sign is 246 square feet. Here, we made the Welcome to Stratford sign approximately 106 square feet larger than we made the extra-space storage sign. We didn't need to have the extra-space storage sign as big as we thought the Welcome to Stratford sign ought to be. So we made it 100 square feet bigger than the sign that we are here for tonight. As you can see from this exhibit, the signage will be much more easily readable to motorists coming from New Haven on I-95 at a high rate of speed, thereby accomplishing the goal of the zoning commission welcoming people to Stratford, and the goal of my client in making potential customers aware of its storage facility. Now, I want to discuss hardship. Jay points out in his administrative comments that, quote, "The requested variance is somewhat consistent with the type of development for the MA zone. The applicant is requesting to install the business sign with an additional 98 square feet," which is a relatively minor request. With that being said, the building has another business identification sign that will face I-95, so a variance sought for the second sign facing I-95 does not seem necessary. So we got another side of the building that faces I-95. As you face, as you're standing on East Main Street, facing the site, the self-storage building is in the back of the site. The back of the building faces I-95 because I-95 curves in that location. And the right side of the building also faces I-95. So we have two sides of this building facing I-95. That's what Jay's talking about. We've got a sign on this side, so why do we need a bigger sign on that side? I disagree with Jay's analysis of this situation. The other sign facing I-95, to which Jay makes reference, is on the south side of the building that runs parallel to I-95. Furthermore, if you look at the plans that were submitted, this sign is only 74 square feet. 74 square feet, okay? It is, because it's on the south side of the building, parallel to I-95, cars will be speeding past this sign when it becomes visible to drivers. It is a sign at 74 square feet with little practical value, and it certainly is not significant enough to offset our desire to have a larger sign on the back of the building. Because when you're, when you're driving towards the back of the building, the back of the building is right in front of you. Whereas when you're going by the side of the building, that side is on your right-hand side. The back of the building is much more visible. On the other hand, the two signs on the rear of the building, the Welcome to Stratford sign and the extra-space storage sign, are on the rear of the building perpendicular to I-95 and will be easily seen by drivers coming over the Hoosatonic River Bridge on I-95. Our hardship does exist in this case because the advertising sign for extra-space storage has to compete with the Welcome to Stratford sign to gain the attention of passing motorists. As I said, this is the first variance I've ever requested for the dock shopping center on behalf of Erstad Biddle Properties, which is the eighth-largest taxpayer in the town of Stratford, paying $832,076.14 annually in real estate taxes. On the other hand, I've also represented the owner of the Marshall LA Fitness Shopping Center. I represented the owners of the Walmart, ShopRite, Home Depot shopping center, all located in this immediate area on East Main Street and Ferry Boulevard. And I can represent to you that numerous variances were requested for both of those shopping centers in obtaining approval to construct what is there now. And with respect to the Walmart/Home Depot shopping center, I requested and received approval for wall sign, an increase in wall sign on those buildings triple the size of what they were allowed. The reason for that is, it's a big site, Home/Home Depot/Walmart sites, a big site, and it's located in proximity to I-95, and the same issues that apply to that site apply to this site. And the board granted us the waivers there. And that doesn't mean that you have to give me what I'm asking for. I know that BGA approvals are not precedence for anything. Every site is different. Every site has its own nuances. I just want to point out to you that the rationale that existed when the variances of the sign area for the Home Depot/Walmart sign, signs being tripled in size, had to do with visibility from I-95. That was the main reason. You can see that building is set back from I-95. So they needed to make the signs on the business bigger. In this case, the cars are coming at our building very quickly, and therefore we need to have the signs recognizable. By the way, absolutely no residential properties are affected by this application at all. There are no residences in this area. We were not going to be affecting any taxpayers/voters whatsoever with the approval of this application. Thank you.
Attorney Knott, with exhibit six?
Yes.
The two signs, the Welcome to Stratford and the Extra Space Storage, will they be illuminated at night?
I'll have Wayne talk to that. The two signs.
Yes. My name is Willing Biddle. I'm president of the, of Erstad Biddle Properties that owns the shopping center. The Extra Space Storage sign will be illuminated at night. The Welcome to Stratford will not be.
You mentioned about the size of the signs being so that people that are, you're assuming, driving at a high rate of speed would see them.
Right.
I kind of don't see that, because if they're driving at a high rate of speed, which they shouldn't be, no matter how big the sign is, they should be looking where they're going, and it might just, just, I kind of don't understand the rationale of thinking that the sign should be large enough to accommodate people who are driving at a high rate of speed, or am I wrong?
Well, everybody that's on I-95 is driving at a high rate of speed. I mean, the speed limit is 60, 65 miles an hour. That's a high rate of speed, as far as I'm concerned.
Anything over 55?
Yeah, whatever, 55 is a high rate of speed. And many of the people are going faster than that. But having said that, that's the whole purpose, to have these advertising signs facing interstate highways like this, is to attract attention to the customers that are located in the shopping center that they're driving by. Oh, there's a, there's a, there's a self-storage facility. I'll go home and tell my wife, maybe we can bring some stuff into it, that kind of a thing.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Hiddick?
Yeah, on the other side of the coin of what Mr. Travers just asked you, I know from my personal experience that when I'm driving 50, 60 miles an hour, even 40, 30 miles an hour, and I'm looking for a specific building, all right, I think it would be more safe if you could see a larger sign and not be distracted from driving at that rate of speed. That's just my personal opinion. I think there's a safety issue involved, so that when you're, when you are looking for this extra-storage building, you know, you're not looking all over the road, all right, there's the sign right there, you know, you got to get off of that exit.
Right.
That's my personal opinion. That I think there's a safety factor, so.
And to be honest, and I'm going to say it again, to be honest with you, I really think you should give us credit for having built this whole shopping center and never come in for a variance. I mean, I can't believe that myself, having stood here so many times asking for variances. This is a 350,000-square-foot shopping center that we didn't ask for any variances on.
Does the board have any other questions? Ms. Young?
First of all, I want to thank your client for all the investment he has made in the town of Stratford and his properties, and going forward. Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight. I just wanted to confirm with Mr. Hibansky, is it accurate to say, as best as you know, no variances have ever been granted for this site?
I can't get, I can't speak to whether a variance has ever been sought for this site. I know the applicant does have a text change request for the zoning commission now, so while they may not be asking for a variance, they may be amending the zoning regulations to fit their project.
I can tell you that no application that I was ever involved with, and I've been representing this company for about 15 years, ever requested a variance, and I'll tell you why. Because as a lawyer who knows zoning and knows what happens when you go to court, and this is important, but you get whatever you get here, when you go to court, that's the final hammer. If you get a variance here, and a neighbor appeals, and you go to court, the odds are five to one against you in court on the granting of a variance. Variances do not hold up in court for many reasons. They're difficult to sustain in court. And the reason why I don't present applications, major applications like this, that require variances, is because it holds my client up for extortion, having been brought by some wise guy who appeals the approval and tries to get a few dollars. So I don't, I don't allow my clients to submit applications that require variances.
Another question perhaps for Mr. Hibansky. Did I read in your staff comments that the Welcome to Stratford sign is not taken out of the allowance of signage by this applicant?
That's correct. Since the town doesn't include wayfinding signs in the sign regulations, this is considered a wayfinding sign, therefore it does not count towards the signage, signage maximum.
But the sign that's in front of the board this evening is in excess of the allowable square footage, or is it the location or both that puts them here?
Just for the rear-facing signs that face I-95. That's the only variance that's being sought as part of this application, that 98 square feet.
So it's the size or square footage of signage that brings this applicant to us this evening?
Yes. We're over by about 94 square feet.
You anticipated my next question. Thank you. I have no further questions. I guess I'll just ask, did I hear public safety is one of your hardships?
No. No, public safety is not one of my hardships. My hardship is that with two signs on the back of the building, the sign that is traditionally available to the owner of the building for advertising purposes, extra-space storage, is now going to have to compete with a sign that says Welcome to Stratford. Some people are going to see both of them, some people are going to see one of them, some people are going to see the other one. But that is an unusual circumstance that is beyond our control, because the zoning commission asked us to do that as a courtesy to the town, and my client agreed to do it. That's the hardship.
I'm just trying, forgive me, to frame your hardship argument in a way that should a member of the board want you granted, it would be consistent with what the case law is. And so I thought I understood you to describe your concern about future motorists and their potential to miss the sign, or miss the location, which I was construing to be a public safety argument.
No, I did say that with the smaller sign, the motorists are going to be by the building before they see the sign. I don't know that that's necessarily a safety issue. It is certainly an advertising issue, as far as my client is concerned, but the hardship does not have to be safety-related in order to be a valid hardship. As long as, as long as the hardship is not self-created, and as long as it causes this, the property involved to be unique from other similarly situated properties in the area, and it's not in conflict with the plan of conservation and development, the hardship is, the variance is appropriate. And we fall into that category.
I don't want to make you repeat yourself, but you may have to. So your hardship is not public safety, but rather it is a unique piece of property? That's the hardship?
It's a, it's not a unique piece of property. It is a unique rear of the building, because the rear of the building, which the zoning regulations typically contemplate having one sign on, now has two signs on them. And if then when those signs are the same size, in this case, 138 square feet, which is what is allowed, first of all, they're difficult to see at that size, and secondly, they're not very effective for purposes of accomplishing the goal of the signs, one of which is to welcome people to Stratford, and the other of which is to tell them that there's a self-storage facility here. Whereas larger signs don't have that problem.
Thank you.
Mr. DeSulio?
Mr. Knott, as a follow-up to Ms. Young's question, I have a question for you. And I have a thought on this, so I'll... Would you consider a triangular piece of property, an unusual-shaped property?
Oh, absolutely.
And would you say that in this application, the frontage of the building far exceeds the rear of the building because of the triangular shape of the property?
That's true, too.
So 130,000-square-foot building's being proposed, where the rear of the building gets much, much narrower than the front because of the shape of the lot, an irregular-shaped lot. Would it be reasonable under state statute to consider a hardship the size and shape of the lot relative to the rear to the front as a valid cause that will hold up under appeal?
The size and Size, the size and shape of a lot is a valid, uh, valid reason to approve a hardship, and it will stand up in court. And in fact, size and shape of a lot is probably the one har- the one hardship you hear more than any others.
Right. And would you say that the majority of industrial and storage buildings are much more rectangular in nature, such as the other ones that are approved all throughout Fairfield County?
Yeah, because when you think about what goes on inside these buildings, all of the little storage areas are rectangular. So this creates a problem.
Right, so, uh, so in my opinion, and I'm not you arguing this, but as a board member, I think the hardship may lie in the shape of the lot versus other arguments as a primary cause. Would you agree, by the way, Ms. Young? I know we're not in deliberation, we're public hearing still.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dusilio. Next time I have a presentation, I'm gonna make it.
Does any other board members have any other questions?
Thank you.
Absolutely, seeing none. And I still have to read this into the record. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this petition? Seeing none, is there a motion to close this petition? Motion made by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Streets, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Mr. Dusilio, second by Ms. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Uh, would anyone like a break, or do you want to go right into the administrative session? Okay. We shall now start the administrative session. Is there a motion to take?
Sorry about that.
I make a motion-
Eighty Shoreline Drive.
Motion to take Eighty Shoreline Drive off the-
Thank you, Mr. Dusilio. Uh, second, second by Ms. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
I just have J- one question for Jay on this. Um, I'm always looking for applicants that are misrepresenting, and I'm not saying this one is. And so, I noticed the house appeared to be mostly remodeled already. So if it was a dilapidated shack and this app was coming in, I would be worried about coverage once we grant the ZBA waiver, which significantly increases and squares off the whole building. Could they build a, basically, a new house in that footprint? So my question is, do decks constitute coverage for waivers? Could, if they want to get rid of the deck, could they build a big house there?
Decks do count as building coverage.
Okay, so they would be able to build exterior wall at the edge of that deck?
No, they would not be, they would not be considered one in the same. So, uh, if they were to rebuild as-is, they, they would have to follow the same footprint that's for the foundation of the house and would still have, if the board chose to grant this variance for this deck, this wraparound deck, they would have that pre-existing right, uh, would be vested, I, I guess is the, is the term, to be rebuilt as well. But you couldn't, but you couldn't just plop a, a house where the, the perimeter of the deck is now.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make sure I understood your answer to Mr. Dusilio's question? What we approve tonight, the layout as, if we approve tonight, the layout that's shown on the plans, they are wedded to that, they can't substitute new house square footage for a deck so long as they don't exceed the approved coverage?
That would be my understanding and interpretation, that yes. I, you know, you get a hundred different attorneys and a hundred different judges with a hundred different opinions, uh, so you never know if, you know, if someone made an application and they want to build a whole home there. I don't see that it would go in their favor, but, uh, it's my understanding that you could rebuild as-is, um, without modi- without modifications. And I would consider the footprint modification of the foundation or a new perimeter exterior wall of the home as a significant change. Sorry, my microphone keeps going out enough, I'm not sure why.
Could I ask a question as well? Is it accurate to say that we would not need to put any conditions should we grant this variance requiring construction consistent with FEMA because the building department does that as a matter of course?
That's, that's correct. Uh, as part of the building permit process, Flood Plan Administrator is also the building official, ensures compliance with FEMA standards. So that involves the piers, attachments to the deck, uh, from the deck being attached to the structure or however it's best done.
Any further discussion, Mr. Hoydic?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve Shoreline, uh, Eighty, Eighty Shoreline Drive, um, stipulating the fact that, um, the wraparound porch, as presented by the applicant or the applicant's representative, uh, that it would, it would increase the safety factor, that they would not have to go and get off the porch, travel near the, the side of the road, and also that they could just stay on that side of the, within the confines of the porch itself. And, uh, I kind of agree with the, the presenter also that, uh, there is a pre-existing factor here that the house does pre-exist prior to the RS4, um, zoning that was instituted. Um, so that, that is my reasoning for, um, allowing the, uh, the hardship. That's it.
Any further? Shall we have a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, um, is there-
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Dusilio? Does, do we now have a roll call? Excuse me? Mr. Dusilio? Are you-
Yes.
This is yes to approve this application?
Yes, motion is to approve, and I vote yea.
Mr. Hoydic?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Yes.
And the chair, thank you, and the chair votes yes, it approves unanimously. Congratulations. Is there a motion to take Seventy East Main Street off the table?
Motion to take it off the table?
Motion made by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Streets, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, discussion?
My discussion would be, I think Mr. Dusilio did a great job helping frame the hardship argument.
Absolutely.
With that, I make a motion to approve Seventy East Main Street, um, hardship being cited as a variable of the law.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hoydic, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No?
Thank you, folks. Thank you.
So, should we have, oh, we-
Roll call?
We have to make a roll call vote. Mr. Dusilio, how say you?
Aye.
Mr. Hoydic?
Aye.
Ms. Streets?
I vote no. I, um, I think that the sign does, uh, present a safety issue for people traveling along the road, uh, with the tendency to not pay attention to the road and look at a sign.
Ms. Young?
I vote aye.
And the chair votes yes, pass four to one.
Thank you very much.
With that, is there a motion to approve the last session's minutes? Motion approved made by Mr. Dusilio, second by Ms. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, looks like we have a campsite review.
Okay, so I can give a, just a quick overview of the, um, and I know it's near staff comments, but just for the record, uh, the coastal resources, uh, present at this approximate location is identified in the town's coastal resource map as beaches and dunes, which are defined as moderately sloping shores, composed of waterworks, sand, gravel, cobble deposits, and when present, wind-deposited sands, dunes, and sand flats. The beach proper is positioned between the mean low water and coastal bluff escarpments and dunes or vegetation. This application was referred to deep and, uh, the deep representative responded that they had no comment for this application. Typically, activity like this would not be required to, required to have a coastal site plan review, um, and I should have mentioned this in my comments, but, uh, because the project is within one hundred feet of a coastal resource, uh, it is not exempt. And, I, I mean, it's on, it's on a coastal resource. So, um, that's a part of the reason why I triggered that coastal site plan review. Any questions?
Any questions?
Do you need a motion, Mr. Hibansky, to approve the campsite plan?
Yes, please.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Ms. Young, second, second by Mr. Hoydic, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed? Since there, it doesn't look like there's any applications for December, uh, we should look over the, um, dates, the regular meetings for the year of 2020? Uh, just check to make sure that it didn't conflict with any election days or has anybody had a chance to look it over and make a motion to approve it, or? Oh, only because of the fact that, uh, or would you like to save this for the next, um, organization coming up in, uh, the next group coming in, in 2020?
No, we're not gonna, excuse me to interrupt. Uh, we won't have time to be able to adopt that. It has to be done, uh, by the end of the calendar year. Uh, just for the, for reference for the commission, uh, I do check to make sure that these don't fall on, uh, any holidays and, uh, something that I made a mistake of last year is that when they hold same-day voter registration in this room, they don't reserve it, so we had that booked the same day. This calendar said it was open, but it wasn't. I now know to check with the registrar voters to make sure they're not using the room in November. Uh, it might be, but we, Town Hall will be open that day. Who?
Yeah.
Well, Town Hall will be open that day.
I think that's an excellent point, but I think if this is adopted, somewhere mid-year, they can make a resolution to amend it, especially if you have a certain meeting, uh, line item and the, uh, calendar, which is a conflict with the national presidential election.
Am I hearing we don't anticipate having a December meeting? Is that why we're having this conversation now?
That's right.
Just trying to keep up with everyone else, thank you. It's in this collection somewhere. Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Dusilio, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Streets, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Well, um, as, as you all know, uh, I've been elected to be representative of District Three. Thank you. And so this may be, since there's no December meeting, uh, it was an honor to serve with all of you. Uh, I learned so much. I came in here just as green as they come, and, uh, this was, uh, on-the-job training. And I believe all of this has helped me with the next phase of what I'm gonna do as far as service to our town. And I want to say that, uh, this was the most nonpartisan of all the, uh, organizations I served with, uh, the common denominators. We did service to our town and we did it with integrity, and we stayed within the statutes and within the rules. And I believe that we really helped elevate our town, both economically and the fact that keeping people in Stratford, uh, with their homes and businesses, and it was an honor for that. So, um, even though I, I leave you with, uh, with a heavy heart, um, I just appreciate all of you for what you've done for me, coming in as a board member and then electing me as chair was an honor, and I really appreciate that. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, do we have a motion to? Yes, Mr. Dusilio?
Yes, Mr. Devaris, thank you for the floor. This is also my final meeting and the end of my four-year elected term serving on zoning or appeals. And I'd like to take a few moments and thank my fellow board members, alternates, and, uh, that I've had the honor to serve with, for their dedicated service. And a couple of special notes, one to Mary Young, whose zoning expertise results in definite question that knows no bounds. Thank you for your service.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Chairman, Mr. Devaris, a true leader, recently elected to the town council, as you mentioned, congratulations. Your leadership will be missed on zoning board appeals.
Thank you.
And that's Streets, a calm, reflective, soft-spoken, yet highly intelligent and observant member of our team. Ron Hoydic, a statesman who's pragmatic, sensitive, reasoned, most assuredly results in good decisions. Also deserving, I believe, a mention is our best supporting cast, Gail Dusilio, who is not here this evening, but has been our recording secretary. Despite all of the city slicker lawyers that spew volumes of rhetoric and exhibit sense, she seems to handle it all in stride and has a streak of perfect meeting notes in my four years of service. Mr. Hibansky? What can I say? Well, actually, a lot. Jay's been the best at fielding my questions over the years, understanding the nuances of the many applications that came to our board that have only been ascertained by Jay's expertise and patience, and he's so graciously shared with me. Jay, you will no longer have to roll your eyes and tiny buzz at your office and says, "Jay, it's Dave Dusilio, I'm, are you here?" In all seriousness, it was an honor to serve, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, if I could to, uh, being this will be my last meeting, um, I would just like to extend my thanks to all the board members, um, for being fair and honest and cooperative and making great decisions that I, in, in my estimation, um, throughout the four years that I've been here, and the support from staff, which is fantastic. And I'll miss it. And I'm leaving it to a, a great, uh, fill-in that's gonna take this spot. So thank you very much, and, uh, I, God bless everybody. Thank you.
Before you close, I just want to say thank you to all the commissioners who are gonna be standing, going. Uh, the town owes you a debt of gratitude for your service and the time that it takes and the effort that it takes to come to all these meetings, uh, and to go and visit all the sites. So, uh, the town of Stratford, thanks you all.
Are there any more kudos?
One more.
Absolutely.
I too would like to thank my colleagues on this board, this is wonderful, and I miss you. I just really appreciate the tone and the tenor that you have set, uh, the newest member of the board, and, uh, you just make me feel welcome and you-
We don't have that on. And you've, you've just, I've learned, um, sitting beside you and listening to you, and I really appreciate all of the service that you have given to our town. We're all the better for it, and you will be missed.
With that, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, my Mr. Dusilio, second by Ms. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.